All right, I'll call the eight o'clock agenda meeting to order. Have the call order by myself, invocation by Ms. Barbara and the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Williams. Approval of amendments from January second meeting and we're going to the, have we got any adjustments to the agenda?
No, sir.
Chandler. Let me get that.
The then we'll go on to special presentations. We got a presentation of retirement plan for Mr. Bill Lemon. And then the presentation about Dana Lane for our 2223 audit for Wayne County. Then we go into the appointments committee and we have several.
We have several.
And then to the consent agenda.
Mr. Crawford.
I will move the budget amendments right away. It's balls well, we'll take that.
Budget amendment number two sixty-five is to appropriate additional funds from our ARPA funds, three thousand nine hundred eleven dollars.
Hold on just a minute, let's get it on the, the. My internet ain't quite good.
It's slow this morning.
Kelly, can you give us up the speed on our budget? On, on the screen. All right, Andy.
Okay.
That's all about that.
No problem. Number two sixty-five is for EMS. This is to appropriate three thousand nine hundred eleven dollars of additional ARP funds, county ARP funds. The cost of extrication PPE equipment has increased, so we're asking approval to use, use those funds. The next four budget amendments, number two sixty-seven, two sixty-eight, two sixty-nine and two seventy. These four are all sheriff's department and they're for insurance recovery funds needed to repair vehicles.
Is he sitting in empty driving school?
He will be. All county police is having.
And I'm quite sure some are unattractive, but it just needs to get the O.
All right.
The final one, number two seventy-one is for the library. They were approved for grant funds from the State Library of North Carolina. This is for the PLA scholarship. This is to allocate two thousand one hundred thirty-six dollars of those grant funds.
Anybody got any questions? All righty, moving along to your applications for late present use value. And you're also your late property tax extension applications. Those have all been vetted by the tax office and are appropriate to be approved. Any questions on those? We'll move on to item number fourteen, the motion to approve the final upset bid for surplus property jointly owned by the city of Goldsboro and the county of Wayne. Located at one eleven West Pine Street in Goldsboro.
Good morning. This is a surplus property that actually you all approved before. The original offer was one thousand dollars, so we advertised it and went into upset bidding and we actually received six offers on it. So the final high bid was six thousand dollars, so since it went through upset bidding, it just needs to come back before you for final approval. And then we'll send it over to the city for approval as well.
Any questions? Who was the actual last bidder on that?
Henry Battle. Yep. It wasn't the original person who submitted an offer, it was somebody else.
Any other questions? Thanks, sir. All righty. Item number fifteen, the motion to approve the sale of surplus property at East Spruce Street. And seven oh six Spruce Street jointly owned with the county of Wayne and the city of Goldsboro is requested by the city of Goldsboro.
And this came from the city. They received an offer in the amount of four thousand five hundred, four thousand five hundred ninety-four dollars and twenty-five cents. The tax value on this is one thousand two hundred and seventy dollars, so they received the offer. They went through upset bidding, so they're asking for your concurrence on this to approve it. And I did speak to the city and they did notify the adjoining property owners as well.
Okay, it says property located at East Spruce Street and seven oh six, number approved seat, what's the?
I think seven, it's, it's two parcels, but seven oh six, only one of them has an address.
Okay, gosh, copy that, okay. All right, now do we get any questions? All right.
Number sixteen is a motion to approve amendments to the Wayne County eligible project policy for the expenditure of American Rescue Plan Act recovery funds.
And this is an update, if you recall, several years ago for our ARPA funds, we enacted several policies. This policy that's in front of you is the enumerated uses, so if you remember, there were five original uses. So you could use it for public health expenditures, negative economic impacts of COVID-19. Revenue loss, premium pay for employees and then various infrastructures, so those were the original uses. After the fact, Congress updated the law and they enacted three more additional uses. So those three uses are provide emergency relief from natural disasters or the economic, negative economic impacts of natural disasters. Invest in service, transportation, infrastructure projects or invest in Title One housing. And Community Development Act, Title One of that, so there's basically three more. I think probably most applicable to us would be the natural disaster portion of that. We're not engaged in any type of those other uses, but we just wanted to go ahead and update that policy to reflect the change in the law. And I have spoken to Brian Taylor and OES is actually looking at if there's some projects that are in the CIP. That they could cover some of this with the new uses, so we just need to update that policy.
All right, any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Crawford. We'll move on to after that, that concludes the consent. We have county managers report, board of commissioners committee reports. Do we have anything for closed session? Yes, sir, we do have closed session which we can go into now and then we would adjourn. That's it, sir. That'll work. We do have one walk on to appointment committee, so would that can?
Oh, that would need to be a walk.
Would that be?
Not, not really, because typically we don't know until after the appointment committee. So it's, it won't be really considered that.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into closed session. All right.
And it's to discuss matters to preserve attorney-client privilege.
All right, y'all with? All in favor, raise your hand. Oh, no, 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 first, our attorney. All right.
I will be in recess until our nine o'clock meeting.
Thank you.
Uh ask everyone to.
I'll bring the nine o'clock, uh, call nine o'clock meeting to order of January the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, ask everyone to silence your cell phones if you would please. Uh, Ms. Barbara, you have her invitation.
All right, Ms. Firehacks, please. Almighty God, we humbly come before you seeking wisdom for today's meeting. Let the deliberation of this board stir thought-provoking ideas with positive results. Your guiding hand will be evident in every decision we make. As we prepare for this meeting, we ask your guidance and decisions made. In thy name we pray. Amen.
Can you make him out? Do you wish for real?
Before we say the pledge of allegiance, I just wanted to let everyone know Commissioner Foster be here shortly. Um, he had to go to a reentry, um, meeting where he was speaking at that meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Now, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January second, two thousand twenty-four meeting?
So moved.
All in favor, please cast your vote.
Mine isn't coming up.
Would you like to vote?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, do I have a motion to approve today's agenda?
So moved.
All in favor, please cast your vote. All right, thank you. On to special presentation, Mr. Rumpf.
All right, so I asked our IT director to come up.
Where did he get it?
He's in the back, I think.
Come for sure.
Let's call it, let's call it grand entry, right?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Today we gather here to bid farewell to remarkable colleague Bill Lemon as he embarks on a new and exciting chapter of his life, retirement. With mixed emotions, we say goodbye this month as we celebrate the incredible journey and accomplishments of someone who has been an integral part of our team for over twenty-six years. I've worked with Bill Lemon for almost fifteen years. Bill has been a fundamental part of the team and the IT department. Bill first started as an IT employee for the Department of Social Services on August fourth, nineteen ninety-seven. This is after previously retiring from the Air Force. Some of Bill's accomplishments and contributions include implementation of exchange. Uh, DSS was the first department in the county to have exchange, which is our email, uh, um, client server. Um, the county was previously on NC Mail before that, which was a state-run email system. So Bill helped implement that at the Department of Social Services, and then the county adopted it later. He implemented Laserfish for DSS. That's the document retention and archiving solution that we currently have in place. The county adopted it after DSS. Um, he was a part of the virtualization team. We had virtualized servers and applications, and Bill was a big part of that. He's a member of all large projects, including the phone system, exchange upgrades, migrations, building servers, et cetera. Uh, Bill handles the countywide network and data monitoring system. It's called What's Up Gold and Netbots. That monitors all the servers and the data centers. If there's high temperatures, water leaks, anything like that, power loss. Um, yeah, he's the lead in the UPS infrastructure, and that's the uninterrupted power supply. If we lose power, we have battery backups that keep the place running until the generator kicks on. And he's the lead on Windows updates. So if you get Windows updates on your computer, blame that's Bill. And Bill's a team player. As Bill transitions into retirement, his absence will be felt. We are grateful for the knowledge, experience, camaraderie, and conspiracy theories that he has shared with us throughout his career. Bill, on behalf of the entire IT team and the county of Wayne, we want to express our heartfelt gratitude for your dedication, leadership, friendship, and I present this plaque to you. Thank you, everybody.
What a loss for our department. That's two major retirements. Uh, we're certainly gonna miss you.
Yep. I had the pleasure of working with Bill for many years on GIS projects, and he was always so helpful, and, uh, we're gonna really miss him in that respect. Uh, but good luck on his retirement. Uh, moving on to our next presentation will be a presentation by Dana Lane for the twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three audit for Wayne County.
You're allowed four minutes.
Four minutes? I can make that happen if you'd like. Well, thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to perform your, um, twenty twenty-three audit. Um, I'll try to make it four minutes, so.
No, I'll just.
Won't be as much fun as that, so. All right. So my purpose to come today is to present your audit, and of course, I work for the board. I don't work for management. So I am your eyes to go in and perform this audit. And our goal, of course, is that auditor's opinion. And of course, we gave the highest level of assurance, which is that unmodified opinion. If we were not giving an unmodified opinion, we would have already met before today. Okay? Um, our responsibility, of course, is that opinion. We use audit evidence to produce that opinion, such as confirmations from state, from bank accounts, from, um, other nonprofit entities. Wherever you've got money, we give, um, we send out confirmation letters and things like that. We use source documents in order to produce the numbers that you see in the financial statements to give us some assurance on those numbers. And then, of course, we, um, test supplementary information, statistical analysis and things like that in order to, um, have comfort with the supplementary and other information presented in the audit. Um, I always say, if you're not gonna read anything in that audit, you read the management discussion and analysis. It gives you the financial highlights. It explains how the financial statements work together. It's the only place that you'll really see comparative figures. Um, you're, you know, the two-year comparative figures. Gives you budgetary highlights, and it also gives you next year's budget. Um, next year's budget explains where your budget comes from, why you wrote budget the way you did. Okay. What I do, um, when I come here today is pull out the financial statements that I feel are most valuable to you. You have two hundred and, I don't know, fifty pages in the book in front of you. Feel free to read it at your leisure. Call me up. Ask me questions. Send me an email. You all probably have my contact information. If not, you can get it from, um, Angie or, um, Chip here. And so I pulled out the balance sheet. This is the statement that you operate on, and that, you operate on what's called the modified cash accrual. And what that means is you operate in the near term. What can, are you gonna get in the next year, and how are you gonna spend in the next year? And so you operate on what's called, again, that modified accrual. So I pulled out the general fund portion. Now, if you go and look at the balance sheet on page thirty-three, it is like seven columns wide, because that's all your major funds with one column totaling your non-majors. But the one that the commissioners have the most control over is the general fund, and that's where you can have the most control on your spending, and you can make the bulk of your decisions. The other ones, once you make your decision, you've kind of already made that decision, and your spending is dictated by the decision you've already made. So this is where your, basically your reserves are, what you have left that you can spend by. So I pulled out this statement, just this column for us to go over here. So as you can see in your general fund, you ended the year at June thirtieth, twenty-three with cash of about forty-four million, with some restricted cash of about fifteen million. The bulk of that, um, restricted cash is money that's set aside to pay down the QSCAB loan. You have some receivables, some, and some due from other governments, just more receivables totaling around eighteen million, giving you total assets of about seventy-eight million dollars. You had some liabilities. Again, these are your short-term liabilities and with, due within the next year of around three million with some deferred inflows. Most of those deferred inflows deal with tax, and so totaling around five, a little less than five million. And then you have some fund balances, and again, restrictions. Um, that stabilization by state statute, that wonderful figure, um, that reserve that you always have to set aside, some debt payments, again, that QSCAB loan that will pay off in about two more years, and then some other restrictions for school and some grant restrictions. And then you pull down to the bottom in that unassigned fund balance, that twenty-one million dollar figure is the figure that the commissioners have the most control for future planning. And then that fund balance of seventy-three million dollars is basically the equity that the general fund has for Wayne County. Okay, next.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. I don't know how to go back.
Can you go back to that one?
Let me see. Hmm, go to, just hit back. There we go.
If you can. Oh, you can't go back. Okay.
Ah, previous. I see it, previous. There it goes. Not my computer.
I've just got a question here in regards to fund balances.
Uh huh.
Where that totals seventy-three, um, twenty is unassigned. I don't understand why future debt payments on QSCAB would show up there.
Because.
Because that would be a long-term liability, would it not?
No, it's a long-term liability on your government-wide statement, that Exhibit One.
Okay.
But you still have to set aside your, your assets, because on your financial statements, be way quick, QSCAB works, you are allowed to put that money in a bank account. And so on your government-wide statement, which is Exhibit One, you put the money in a bank account, and you have the liability. So you've never really set the reserves aside on your financial statements.
Governmental accounting.
Well, even in a for-profit world, if you had a QSCAB loan, you've never, your net, your equity, you've never reserved that money aside, because you're allowed to sit on the money. You've never paid a debt payment for that QSCAB loan, because you're allowed to leave it in your bank account until you hit fifteen million, and then you'll pay the whole fifteen million at one time. Or is it fourteen million? Fourteen or fifteen million?
All right, dubbing it down for me. So my understanding is, on the QSCAB loan, we got all of the money, and then over the years, we pay it back?
No. You haven't paid any back. You, your only requirement with QSCAB is to set it in a special bank account.
Okay.
For the ten years or fifteen years, however many years you've been setting it aside, ten years, I think. You've been setting it in a special bank account until you hit fifteen million, and then when you hit fifteen million, you'll pay off that loan.
We've got the money.
So you haven't been paying the loan down for.
We've been paying it into that fund.
You've been paying it into a bank account, so you haven't been reducing your liability. So therefore, you have to set that, you have to reserve some of your fund balance aside.
Whereas most loans, you pay so much per year. This one, you just put it, set it aside in a special.
In that restricted cash.
Then I understand why it's showing up there.
That's why it's still in your equity.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We get to prove the interest in that.
Yeah, you get a lot of interest. You get like over half a million in interest on it a year from the federal government, and that's why it was a beneficial loan.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So next, I jumped one statement to went to the budget versus actual because it's identical numbers, and that's, um, again, the governmental funds. And you'll see here that your total revenues were below, um, below what you budgeted, mainly because of some timing of when you earned some grants. So not a big deal here, um, that you were below what you budgeted. It will just come in, in the next year. And, um, when you get in trouble as budgetary goes, it's usually expenditures. So not, um, no issues here noted, but you were below what you budgeted. And then for expenditures, you were below your expenditures for what you budgeted by another fifty million. But again, a lot of it had to do with the timing of the grant revenues of when you earned them and when you spent them. So therefore, it did not, um, come to fruition in twenty-three. So you probably gave your budget in twenty-four for that grant that was planned. You do have one prior restatement in that on this statement, and that is due to closing the fleet management into the general fund this year that you did away with that internal service fund. And again, goes down to that fund balance of seventy-three million dollars. Any questions here? Mr. Drucker, you're staring hard.
There was a lot of information there.
It is.
It took you a year to come up with that.
There is something new on the statement, Sabidas, which we'll get to a little bit later, and that's a new accounting standard. But it's, it's fine that that was not budgeted for, we don't consider that a finding, because it was a new accounting standard during the fiscal year.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay? Okay. I always like to do a visual representation. It gives you a very good, how do we do year to year? You can really see where your revenues come from. And there is a large difference for a change. Usually I can say, oh, look, you're identical year to year, but this year you're not. And you'll see education grew, and that's because you received a large grant from the lottery to pay for Fremont schools, yeah, for the Fremont school system. And so you will see that it actually changed the way it looked from year to year, because the bottom right corner is last year's, um, pie graph, and then the top, the big one, is this year's pie graph. And you will see that property taxes kind of squeezed down a little bit because education took more. And that's from the lottery funds that we recorded as a receivable, again, because of the lottery funds, which was nice to see to get a nice chunk from that, um, for Wayne County. Okay? And then expenses by function looks very similar, spending it pretty much the same way year to year. Okay? All right. And then real quickly, we'll briefly go by, over the proprietary funds, and these are your business-type funds, solid waste, Maxwell Center. Those are your major funds, and major funds are calculated by assets and revenues and things like that. And then your other enterprise funds, and those make up both the airport and the store. So those are combined on these statements. And you'll see that your assets for these, um, current assets, cash and things like that, sixteen million, total current assets were around eighteen million. Your total, um, land and things like that were around fifty-nine million, giving you total assets of around seventy-six million in your proprietary funds. Liabilities, uh, current liabilities were one point eight million. Other long-term liabilities, around twenty-one million, giving you twenty-three million in total liabilities. But your equity in those business-type funds were around fifty-four million. Okay? Yes, sir.
On your capital assets, I see on, like, on the Maxwell Center, you're talking about, uh, land and the, uh, other capital assets, but it says net depreciation. So you're not valuing that at today's value?
It's the cost you paid and then being written of, off over the life based on the life that you chose, whether it's fifty years for building, ten or twenty years for equipment. And there's a chart in the note disclosures that tells you the life that the county has chosen for each asset.
But we all know, we could never build the Maxwell Center for twenty billion dollars today.
Oh, no, sir.
So it's based upon what we paid.
Paid for it.
For it.
Yes, sir.
Originally.
And that's traditionally how capital assets are.
Well, not my book.
Huh?
Not in my book. My book is today's market value.
Well, no, that might be what it's worth, but that's not how financial statements work at book value.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
And then this is the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance, which shows the operations and where they ended up for the year, with operating revenues for the solid waste being around six million, Maxwell Center being one point four million, your other enterprise funds being around one point seven million, giving you ten, around nine million in revenues, um, expenses being around eleven and a half million. And then they had other fundings around two million, making, change in net position around one point seven million dollars. Okay? Okay? Okay, so part of our responsibilities is to issue other reports required by our profession. One is on internal controls because you receive governmental funding and we issue what's called single audit level reporting. And so we have to issue three more types of reports. A report on internal control, a report on your federal programs, and then a report on your state programs. And all three of them, we had no findings at all. We also report on a communication of no material weaknesses. We did issue three other recommendations and I met with both management, Mr. Gurley and Chip, and went over the other recommendations where we are recommending that the board consider hiring an internal auditor. We also went over conflict of interest statements, adopting a policy to have a more formal procedure for conflict of interest statements that include not just the board, but employees. Your staff attorney has done a lot of research and work on that and we have both come to agreement on what that should look like. And then also a discussion about the EMS accounts receivable and some procedures that should be improved on with that. And so we issued a report recommending three other recommendations. And then I also issue a report called a communication to those charged with governance, basically the board. So there was a change in accounting policies this year and that is the implementation of GASP number 96, subscription-based IT arrangements. It's a mouthful. It's another accounting standard that affected several financial statements and it just basically said that you have arrangements in IT where a portion of the IT is the use of the IT asset and a portion is help desk. And we had to book an, basically, asset of the use of that IT arrangement. And you pay a software to come up with that accounting change. And so we booked that this year. The biggest effect was on the government-wide statements, so you won't see a large change in that. They do, the county does need to consider it for budgetary arrangements, for '24 though. There are accounting estimates made in the financial statements, those depreciation, current portion, allowances for bad debt, those are large ones. There were no large difficulties in performing the audit. We were a little bit later this year mainly due to changing in staff. This Sabida implementation was a little bit time-consuming, probably, the largest portion being because of the change of the staff. And then the LGC still has not posted a template for the financial statements, just so you know, because I know that was another concern of ours. And only because I pressured them did they give me an example of the changes that they wanted. And the largest change in the financial statement is how opioid funding was treated. And so we used their example to represent the opioid funding. And no disagreements with management and management does sign certain representations for us. Any questions here?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
How often is it that you ask local municipalities to have internal audits?
Like local municipalities?
Like, like the government here, like us.
Like the city you mean?
No, the county, right, the county. Because you're saying, you're saying that we need, that we should have internal audit.
So an internal auditor function would be a permanent employee, is what my recommendation is. Okay, so a financial statement audit is, we are guarantee, not guaranteeing, but we are testing the figures in your financial statement to a reasonable balance. And we're saying that, and reasonableness for Wayne County is, I don't know, in a proprietary fund, it's probably 250, $300,000 is reasonable. Okay, so that doesn't, if something, a balance on a line item is $50,000, we might not even test that line item. Okay? We test a lot of the balance sheet, almost 100% of the balance sheet items or the statement of net position items, okay? We test those kind of items almost 100%. It's just easier and more efficient, okay? But some of the revenue and expense line items don't get tested if they're below a certain dollar amount because that's not what an audit does, okay? As far as a financial statement audit. So an internal auditor would be somebody that would go into a department and they would test down to a $5 deposit. They would pool receipts for a whole month and make sure they agree to those receipts. They would test things to a level that is not required of a financial statement audit. And this would be a full-time position of the county. And a county of your size probably should seriously consider an internal auditor. You've grown to a point that that would be beneficial, I believe. Also, they would not report to the finance department. I think Pam Holt, the ones that know Pam Holt, she was originally hired as an internal auditor. And because of constraints on the time of the finance department, she never performed the job of an internal auditor for Wayne County. And therefore, we would not want her, or her or him, whoever was hired as an internal auditor, to report to finance officer because we believe they would be pooled to take care of fires and finance. And our suggestion was that they would report to the staff attorney.
Got it, thank you.
So...
Could I qualify that a bit in regards to, you're saying you're recommending that because our county has grown to that size. So I take it that many other counties of our size do have, in fact, an internal auditor.
Johnston County has one. I don't know other ones off the top of my head, but yeah.
But it's commonplace.
It is commonplace to have an internal auditor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the state requires the performance indicators to be presented. When we upload the audit to it, the state, we have to fill out this data input and it automatically self-fills these items. If you have any red items, you have to write a letter to the state explaining what are you going to do to fix the red items. So you should have a general fund balance between 16 and 32% general fund balance available. And that is basically your unassigned. And your fund balance is around 36%, so you are in good shape there. Did you have appropriated fund balance and your fund balance was negative? No, you did not. And did you have a general fund balance total less than zero or a fund balance deficit? No, you have a positive fund balance total of 73 million. So you are good there with the state. Keep doing the wrong direction. Okay, and the water and sewer fund. Quick ratio, your quick ratio should be greater than one. A negative balance indicates that your fund is not covering the cost and you have a 1.47, so you are good there. And this was an issue last year. As you could see, you've been red for three years in a row. You had negative balance of your operating net income, it should be greater than zero. A negative balance indicate fund rates are not covering costs and you have a negative $250,000. Some of that negative balance is due to your debt payment, which the LGC is aware of, but that doesn't cover all of it. Last year it did, but not this year. And I do know that that is an issue. Andrew's well aware of this issue and is prepared to work on that letter to address this situation. I have an idea. I've asked the LGC to look into it and I have talked to Chip about it. You have a very limited number of entities supporting your water and sewer fund, so is it really a proprietary fund? Because you really are just an intermediary passing it on to other government entities. So you might not really be a proprietary fund. Something to consider. Your unrestricted cash is good. It should be around, greater than 16%. You have 75%.
Uh, hmm.
Okay, let's go back.
You're too fast. I'm an old man, slow down a bit. So make sure I'm understanding here. We're saying that we had a deficit of almost $250,000 in the sewer fund.
How much of that was debt payment, though?
Debt payment is...
Based on, I guess that's the line?
Around 150.
So we're still about 100 less, similar to what it was in '22.
Similar to '22.
We need to address that again.
But I know the city raises rates every single year, right? I think they've raised it every...
But I thought we were keeping up with what the city was doing.
We have. I think it also, that takes into consideration labor costs, employees.
Oh, it's every, yes, it does. It's not just rates. Unfortunately, you can't...
Well, we don't expect to make any money off of that sewer, but as such, we would at least want to break even. And we're continuously subsidizing it, basically. Okay, I'm moving.
I mean, you could, you could justify the debt, you could justify, the LGC would understand the $150,000 loss every year for the debt payment.
Correct.
Because they include debt payment in this.
Right.
And we can justify that because of the school system.
Sure.
And they're fine with that piece of it. But it's...
But the 100 is...
But you're having, what, what did we figure out? Eight units, 12? Eight, I think it's only eight entities supporting all the cost. So is it really a proprietary fund?
Round figures, we're probably, we're 20,000 to better than we were last year then.
No, you were, you were good last year.
You were good last year.
You were good last year because if you add 150 debt payment to that, you, you charged all your costs. Two years ago, you were 50,000 shy. This year, you're 100,000 shy.
And also remember your I and I issues and 2.8 million dollars for, for repair work that needs to be done to your sewer system. Rainfall amounts, those things drive your, your costs to Goldsboro as well.
Ever since I've been on this board, it's always been about sewer. Let's move on.
Yeah. So unfortunately, oh, and this is new this year. This is a new water and sewer capital asset condition ratio. It says that the remaining useful life of your assets have to remain above 0.50 and that anything below that, you may need to replace the assets in the near future.
And we had .53.
You're, you're in the good. Almost every sewer system I've dealt with has been below that. I've only had two units above .53. You and Southern Wayne, I think, are the only two that have been above .53.
But it says it's supposed to be above .50.
Yeah, and you're at .53, so you're good. But you're barely.
Barely good, but we're good.
So...
Okay.
Okay. All right, so everything else is good and so the only thing you have to address is the water and sewer fund. So, for this. And, and she has two months to do it and you have to sign, the board has to sign that they've seen the letter. And that's it. Any other questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody got any questions? We've got a work session in the upcoming meetings.
In February.
I hope I can find all those documents within this...
Just call me. I think you have my phone number, right?
Thank you, ma'am.
Can you email me this? This presentation?
I can.
That'd be great. That'd help a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Need a motion to approve. So... Have a motion to approve. So, do we all need to raise our hand or do we need to vote?
No, it should pop up.
Yep, it just did. Mine did.
Mine had. I'd like to get back on first. I'll vote yes.
Yes.
Mr. Akon, you want me to vote for you as well?
Yeah, mine didn't come up.
If the screen goes down, the voting doesn't come up.
You hear that, I see. All right. Thank you all to the appointment committees, Mr. Hardeston.
Yes, we have several, Mr. Chair. Okay, we're gonna start with WCDA and these will continue in the form of a motion. We'd like to appoint Dr. Ed Groome, Mount Oliveria, Chris Gurley, Wayne County, and Chris Boyer for the City of Goldsboro.
All in favor, please cast your vote.
You'll have to raise your hand for that one.
Just this one will have to be manual.
All right.
Okay. The motion to reappoint Barbara Akon, Barry Gray, and Robert Dingus to GWTA Board of Directors.
Have a motion, please cast your vote.
You want to raise your hand?
She said it would come up.
This one should come up.
All right.
We're good?
Yes, sir.
Motion to reappoint Sheila Exum to the Tourism Development Authority.
Have a motion, please cast your vote.
Okay, number, okay. Number three, motion to appoint Geo Mills to the Tourism Development Authority, replacing Charles Board Brogdon.
Have a motion, please cast your vote.
Motion to reappoint Dr. Osborne Wyther and Gary Ethan to the Animal Control Advisory Committee.
Have a motion, please cast your vote. Same one, okay.
Yeah, this is the animal controller. I forgot to hit start vote.
All right.
Okay. Motion to reappoint Kim Larson, Ann Snyder, Anna Snyder, Michelle Estrada, Joel Gilley, Lee Kirkland, and Allison Batila to the Latino Council.
All right. Have a motion, please cast your vote.
And finally, Mr. Chair, motion to appoint Gary Childman to the Latino Council.
Have a motion, please cast your vote.
Did it go through? Now, did yours go through?
I voted, yeah.
All right, thanks, Chair. That concludes the appointment committee.
Thank you, Mr. Hardeston. I entertain a motion for approval to consent agenda.
I moved. I'm sorry.
All in favor, please cast your vote. I've already voted. Thank you. Now, it's popping up again, but it won't, I guess. All right, thank you. Can I manage your report?
Uh, yeah, the only thing I have really is I'd like to pass my condolences on to Commissioner Williams and his family for the passing of his father. I was unable to attend due to being out of town Saturday, but would just like, my thoughts and prayers are with your family during that time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Williams?
I just want to thank everybody for the, just for their prayers, for just the hugs, just the support. I really want to thank this community. This community, wow, I'm just so thankful that I do live in Wayne County. You know, there's been times where I, I didn't feel that way. And, you know, with losing my dad, I, you know, the county has just been superb. The staff has been superb. Thank you. I don't know how to say it, but I'm so thankful. Thank you for the board members that came and emailed me and called me. I even want to, I want to thank the City of Goldsboro. They had some elected officials, Miss Matthews came to the funeral, the city manager, he came to the funeral. And I really appreciate that so much because my, my dad, he was a generous, special person, you know, and I'm just thankful. Thank you to this board. Thank you, Chris, for showing up so much. Commissioner Forster as well for showing up. I really appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Doherty?
I do want to express my appreciation for a little change in regards to our agendas that actually outlines and lists all of the appointments on our agenda. I think that's a good idea.
I think that's a good idea. Other than that, I have no other comment. All right, Commissioner Acock. Mr. Acock?
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to give my condolences to Commissioner Williams. I had planned, planned on going to the service, but my daughter told me I didn't need to be in a big crowd. My wife told me I didn't need to be in a big crowd. The chairman told me I didn't need to be in a big crowd. So I knew I, that I wouldn't need to keep asking anybody else because I wasn't going to get a yes, yes answer. But your thoughts and, our thoughts and prayers are with you and your family.
Thank you so much, sir.
And that's all I have, sir.
All right. Commissioner Acock, Ms. Acock?
Oh, yes, I just want to remind everybody about the Chamber Board banquet Friday night at 6:00. Also, I attended the Chamber Board of Directors meeting. And as of October 31st, they had a $19 loss. But they also had 40,292 outstanding accounts receivable that has not been paid as of October 31st. So they've had a pretty good year on their collections and everything. And so I just wanted to share that with you. And they've changed their, their, their presentation on the Wayne County Chamber Converse lettering. And I really love it. It's navy blue. And they've changed the lettering, how it's changed and everything as well. So when you go on to site, you'll see a new presentation of their, their chamber. So that's all I have. And also, my condolences to Commissioner Williams. I know it's a big loss, and I just pray that it gets better for you.
Thank you, thanks so much.
Mr. Hardeston? And again, I'd like to express my condolences also. I was out of town, I was unable to attend the services. But my heart goes out to you and your family. Also, I see they've cut a bike and the sheriff here. I know you guys have been busy and want to continue thanking you for your service. Pass that along to your staff. And that's it, Mr. Sheriff.
Thank you, sir. It was, Mr. Carlton, Pastor Barnes did the eulogy. And he's been, him and my dad's known each other for a long time. But he's, of course, I'm raised in the Pentecostal Free Will Baptist, so I was kind of right at home because he, and I spoke to him after the meeting, after the funeral, that he did a, it was a great service. And I didn't know your dad, but when I left him, I felt like I did. He was, he was a special man, a given man, based on everything that everybody talked about. So I know you're going to miss, it's hard to lose a parent. I've experienced that, and it's not easy, so. The, that's really all I have. We have the Farm Association banquet tonight at Langery. So all commissioners are invited, if you're going to attend.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, yep. So that being said, we don't have any closed session, correct? So I entertain a motion for adjournment. It's adjourned.